Okay, good morning, everybody. I'll call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for September sixteenth. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Dunn?
This is Derek. Roy, I think, is having some tech difficulties this morning, so I've got Dustin trying to help him out.
Hopefully, we'll pick up Roy here in a minute. Move on down to Pledge of Allegiance. And today's invocation will be led by Pastor Todd Miller of the Cherry Street Wesleyan Church in Ottawa. All right, pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Pastor, you on?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everybody. First off, I want to thank you all for inviting me here through this Zoom meeting. And just as you invited me, we need to invite the Holy Spirit to join us. But it, and I mean, more importantly than inviting Him here, is to actually listen to Him. There's too many politicians and government officials using God as a prop for political gain. And I know that's not the situation within our government. I'm thankful for you guys for that. But as we pray, I just ask everybody to take a moment and listen. Find out what He's saying to you, how He's speaking to you, and go on throughout your business, not just today, but through the rest of the times, listening and being led by Him. So do please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the leaders of this awesome county that, that invite you to join them. Not just join them, but lead them in leading this wonderful county, making the decisions that they have to make. And during this, this time of crises, that they're just having to make some really hard decisions. And no matter what they do, it's going to be viewed as wrong by some people. They just can't make the right decisions. It's impossible. But with you, all things are possible. So I'd ask you to infill each and every one of our commissioners and our leaders here, and fill them with your Holy Spirit. Move in them and use them to guide this county in a way that, that not only makes the county prosper, but, but brings glory to you, God, in a way that we become a light to the rest of the state and to the rest of the world. May you be glorified in everything that happens through these meetings. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Cole. Amen.
All right, I was just about to ask. So, good morning, Roy.
Yeah.
Derek, do you have anything for correspondence and organizational business today?
No, sir.
Janet, do you have any public comment?
No, sir.
All right. Our claim vouchers today would consist of our minutes from the September ninth meeting and claim vouchers in the amount of $1,121,512.44. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Have a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second?
Commissioner Stottermeyer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, down to items of business. The first of which is to look at and consider approving the county's 2021 holiday schedule. Understand, Sari, are human resource directors on the line?
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Go ahead.
Okay. Annually, the Franklin County Commission passes a resolution designating the holidays to be observed the following year. And historically, Franklin County has followed the holiday schedule approved by the state of Kansas. So staff recommends you consider for approval the 2021 holiday schedule as outlined and approved by the state of Kansas. And if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer those.
This is Commissioner Stottermeyer. Not a question, just a comment. I know, I'm looking it over. I can see in years past, Columbus Day has kind of been used to move around to cover for Christmas or New Year's or Thanksgiving. And I see this upcoming year that that won't be necessary. And that's my only statement.
Yeah, we usually don't, don't include Columbus Day.
Yeah, this is Derek. I think Dawn was spot on. Actually, I, we have reluctantly included Columbus Day in the past, but only when it hasn't made sense to move it and slot it someplace else. Like, I'm not in favor of cutting Columbus Day for the sake of cutting Columbus Day. Like, I, you know, one of the benefits we offer our employees is, is, you know, I think we all realize we observe an ample number of holidays. But in this instance, I don't know where it would make sense to, if we wanted to move Columbus Day. And that's a conversation Sari and I had, given that we're observing Christmas on Christmas Eve. You know, that's been a logical spot in the past. But I just, I'm certainly willing to have the discussion. I just don't know where we would move Columbus Day this year. Thank you.
Yep. Personally, I think people are disappointed when they show up and obviously the courts isn't, you know, within our control. But I think people are kind of disappointed when they show up and county offices aren't open for business because it's Columbus Day. I just, I'm not in favor of being closed then. Now, the conversation of, you know, taking a day off from everybody. If we wanted to do an additional paid day off for all employees, and they could take, take that off throughout the year, I'd be open to that. But I just don't, don't like the idea of not being open for business on that day.
Commissioner Dickinson, maybe we can have a holiday to celebrate the end of COVID. Be awesome to be able to do that.
This is Sari. I was just gonna say that another consideration in 2020, or this year, we employees have two holidays at Christmas. They have a day for Christmas Eve and a day for Christmas Day. And that's not offered in 2021. It's just one day at Christmas, just another consideration.
Would that make thing, New Year's Eve, could, what day is New Year's Eve on? We could do that, take that day off, Friday?
New Year's Day.
The last day of the year?
New Year's Day in 2021 is actually on a Friday.
So we could get that one off?
So if we use New Year's Eve, that would actually be a Thursday, but it would actually be in 2020.
Oh, New Year's Eve is, is, is Friday?
Yes, New Year's, well, I guess, I'm sorry, New Year's Day.
New Year's Eve would be Friday?
Right.
Yeah. So I think we're confusing 2020 and 2021. Like, we, we can't give an additional 2021 holiday in the year 2020. And looking at my calendar, New Year's Eve in 2021 is on a Friday. December 31st of 2021 is a Friday. So we, we could add that, I suppose. And if we didn't want to observe Columbus Day, we could give that Friday off.
Well, there's, traditionally, on Thanksgiving, we normally do Thursday and Friday, right?
Yeah.
So that's not, something that was added. Okay. I would think Christmas Eve would be more, more useful to employees, more appreciated than, I mean, it's always nice, I guess, to have a day off in that stretch between Labor Day and, and the holidays. But I think it's more logical for Christmas Day. And I think people would understand if we happen to be closed for business on that day more than October 11th.
Well, but per this calendar, we are closed on Christmas Eve. Like, Christmas Day is being observed on Christmas Eve, which is a Friday. So if you wanted to do the 23rd, in addition to the 24th, then that would be an option. But because Christmas falls on a Saturday, we are observing it officially on Friday or Christmas Eve.
I see that now.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, just looking ahead to the next year, since New Year's Day is actually going to be on, on a weekend. What will we do about that?
Well, the state has chosen not to observe it, which is why, to go back to what I just said, if you want to observe New Year's Day and, or, and 21 effectively, or I don't know what they're gonna do in 22, I guess, but December 31st of 21 is a Friday. And so that, to me, would be, if you really didn't want to observe Columbus Day, that would be a logical choice to slot in there.
As Commissioner Dunn, for this year, I think Christmas Eve versus Columbus Day would be my choice.
We already have Christmas Eve.
I kind of agree with Chairman Waymire about Columbus Day. Just being a regular day, not a holiday.
This is Commissioner Stottermeyer. I think, like Derek said, we don't want to get the two years confused. 2020 is already sat, done, over with. So we're just talking about 21. I'd rather extend Christmas holiday one more day than Columbus Day, but that's just my opinion.
Sari, Derek, and I guess any of the rest of the department head, any department heads would say, would adding a day to pay time off, give some pros and cons to that, just for every employee? So they could take it whenever they wanted?
Yeah, I mean, I, I could talk to Sari about that offline. I mean, I don't, that honestly would probably be preferred by most of our workforce. I would want to make sure there isn't any undue procedural headache for Sari and her staff. But, you know, we don't have to approve this today. If that's something that, you know, you want us to look at, we gladly can. Or, Sari, you're obviously on the line. If you're comfortable just with doing that, and if the rest of the board agrees, then I don't have a problem with that. But what are your thoughts?
Are we just saying we'd add an additional personal day that people could?
Yeah, we would nix Columbus Day and add a personal day for every employee.
So in 21, they would get 16 hours of personal leave as opposed to eight?
We would just have to determine based on when an employee starts, you know, their start date, if they would get the full day. I mean, if somebody starts, you know, in June, they still get that personal day? Or do we just say, you have to be employed the first day of the year? That's the only consideration I can think of.
October 11th would be a logical point also. I mean, if you're there prior to Columbus Day, then you get the time off for Columbus Day. You can take it whenever you want. And if later in the year, the majority of employees would get it anyways, so.
I think what I would propose is let Sari and I work up a couple options. That will be one of them, adding another personal day, and we'll define the parameters of that. And then we can also bring back a couple of proposed days to just observe another holiday, whether that's December 31st of 21, or December 23rd. And then, unless, again, if there's a consensus here today, you tell me. But it, it sounds like we're, we don't have a strong consensus. And if you let Sari and I look at it, we'll gladly bring something back to you. Give you some options.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, go ahead, Don.
Oh, let Roy go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Roy.
Well, I think having a floating holiday, so to speak, is kind of what, what you're looking at for next year. So I'd be in favor of that.
All right. What are your thoughts, Don?
All right, if there's no more comment, I'd like to table this, let Derek and Cherry discuss it. Ain't nothing we have to do today, I don't think. Let them look at the, the ins and outs of it and bring it back to us next week.
Yeah, I like that. All right. Rick? Do you have any?
Yeah, I'm fine. No, I'm fine with tableing it and letting Derek and Sari look at it and come back with something.
Any thoughts you want to add, Ian?
I think the floating holiday is a really great idea. And I would be, yeah, fine with tabling.
All right. Derek, do you need action to table it?
No, not at all. We'll table it and we'll, whether it's next week or the week after, we'll, we'll be back. And we'll focus on, you know, I happen to like the, we'll call it the floating holiday idea. And we'll just more firmly define the parameters of that so that, you know, we all understand what it is we're actually approving. And we'll bring a couple more options for potential observed holidays as well, just so you have choices. But yeah, that's, that's where we'll put our focus. And, and yeah, we don't need any action at this point. Thanks, Cole.
Good. It may work out well for everybody. So. Our second item of business is consider awarding a bid for Hot Mix Asphalt to Kilo Construction. David Lee, our Public Works Director's on?
Good morning, commissioners. On August 5th, the commission authorized a solicitation of bids for this asphalt project. We opened those bids on August 25th at the county clerk's office. We received two bids with this project, and the lowest and best bid was provided by Kilo Construction in the amount of $659,800, which is less than I had anticipated. So I feel really good about those prices. The Betis Asphalt was the second bidder, and they were considerably more money than, than Kilo. But they were actually about where I thought the project would come in. So we're, we're seeing over $100,000 in savings compared to what I anticipated, which is a, is a very good thing. And I will be meeting with Kilo Construction, actually after this meeting, to finalize the details and get the project kind of kicked off. And we're anticipating this project starting before the end of the month. So either next week or the following week.
This would give you some latitude. Also, since you still have some, some funds available to Walder mobilize, maybe look at some other opportunities to?
That is, that is actually part of what we are going to be doing. We've got two areas that, that were included in the bid documents that are actually going to be taken care of by Southern Star Pipeline and their contractors. These particular roads, Nebraska south of K-68, and then Finney Road west of, or excuse me, east of Highway 59, both of those roads were heavily traveled by the pipeline heavy equipment. And they have agreed to overlay those roads themselves at their expense, which that work will be starting roughly about the same time that Kilo gets started. So we will, we will move the, the tonnage that we had allocated for those locations to other locations. And, and again, the, the tonnages that were, they were strictly estimated. And so, once they get into it and get working, those tonnages may increase or decrease. But we will certainly look to utilize the dollars that we have available appropriately.
David, this is Derek. How much were you prepared to spend on this project potentially?
Roughly between $800 and $850,000 is, is where I thought it would come in.
Okay. For the commissioners, is there any desire, and, you know, we're going to recommend that you approve this bid, obviously. And my question is, is there any desire to give David and/or I the authority to spend up to, say, $800,000 so that we can potentially add additional spots to this program? And David, you feel free to speak up if that's not necessary, or you don't want to do that. But as Cole said, while we have, while we haven't mobilized, it might make sense to knock out as much of this as possible if
There is, there is plenty of, there's plenty of opportunity to, to do more patching and more overlay work throughout the county. There's, we had to, when we were setting this project up, we evaluated all of the roads and marked out a lot more locations than this, this proposal is gonna, this bid is gonna be able to handle. And so there is multiple locations that we could add to this list. And I would be happy to work with Kilo to fill out and utilize up to $800,000.
Is there a desire?
Oh, this is Cole. I just point out that we recently had our pavement study completed. And, you know, these, any additional spots won't be kind of flippantly or, you know, randomly added. The need, we knew this going into far exceeded our, our funds. We were just lucky that we were able to get a little more done than we thought.
That, that is absolutely correct.
This is Commissioner Howard. We, we're doing this in place of the chip and seal. We would go over the $800,000 if we were doing the chip and seal. So I have no problem with going up to the $800,000.
Yeah, the, the, just for reference, the chip seal project would be anywhere from $850,000 to $1 million, depending on which material that we use and how many miles we would anticipate doing. So, you know, the $800,000, I think, is a, is a fair number. And it gives us a little flexibility to continue doing some asphalt work ourselves with county forces.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. Since we only did half of the, what we had, what we thought we were going to do last year and none this year, I, I would agree. I, I, I think that the more we get done, I don't, you know, the, if, the less you get done, the farther behind you get. And, and I'd rather not get behind. So yes, we have the funds available, and I think we should use them.
What do we want to set that number at? I know normally if we spend $850 on chip seal, but you'd also spend a significant amount on patching every year as well. So
Correct.
You know your budget.
I'd like the, I like the $800,000 number.
Okay.
I think we can certainly, you know, with the prices that Kilo has given us through this bid, I think that that is, we can catch a lot more area with a little bit more money.
David, I'd like to have a question.
Sure.
Is the Jackson Road Bridge another project you're thinking? Or could it fall into this?
Jackson Road is another project. And in fact, I'm gonna talk during my staff report, I'm gonna mention Jackson Road and, and some things that we are looking at doing with that. And so at this point, I think I would like to leave that separate. But here in the next few weeks, we will be addressing the Jackson Road Bridge with you all.
I appreciate it. That, that road is, that bridge has been, I mean, way before you was here.
Yeah.
And it's been neglected and passed and touched up, seems like forever. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Commissioner Howard. I have a question, David.
Yes, sir.
This, being it's this time of year, and we're gonna start getting into which is not really prime time for asphalt work and so forth. Or do we have a timeline on this? Or is this going into next, next year also?
I will find out for sure today. But my, and I am anticipating this being taken care of by the end of October. It may bleed into November a little bit, depending on weather. But the, the overlays need the, you know, need the warm weather. The, the patching can be done when it's a little bit cooler because of how they go about doing that. But they, all indications are is they're gonna get started here in the next week or so, and that they will be on our project until they're done.
Okay. My concern is where we, we all probably, we're on the board at the time, remember some issues we had on the, the chip and seal when we didn't get it in until way late and the weather turned cold and we didn't get near the, the job done that we was hoping for. So we moved up the bidding to try to, to beat the, the colder weather. So I was just concerned about the, this running into too much cold weather.
If the weather turns on us, I will be back before you to, with some recommendations on how to handle that. So we won't just, we will not allow them to work when the weather isn't conducive to this.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to award the 2020 Hot Mix Asphalt and Overlay Project to Kilo Construction, Inc. in the amount of $659,800 and change orders not to exceed the total project cost of $800,000?
Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Stottermeyer, second?
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Under our third item of business, which would be to consider appointing two members to the RMH Board of Trustees. Derek?
Yeah, as you all are well aware, the Board of County Commissioners appoints members to the RMH Board of Trustees. I was recently contacted by Janet Peters, who is, is obviously a member of said board. And she had requested that we appoint Paul Bean to the board and then reappoint John Cohen. To respect the privacy of both of the applicants, I, I didn't post their resumes on, online. I sent them to you yesterday. So you should have all of their information. Both of them are on the call. And so certainly, they'll both stand for questions. I will tell you, obviously, this is a board decision, but, but staff recommends that you grant these appointments. We've worked closely with both of these candidates over the years. I know, Cole, you were part of that affiliation process, as was I towards the end. And one of the things that, that has always kind of stood out to me, John Cohen was, of course, on the board at that time. And I thought he, maybe more so than any of the other board members, asked very thoughtful questions about the affiliation. And it was clear to me that he, you know, he was concerned about the community and what this would look like post-affiliation. And I think, you know, that's really all you can ask for in a board member, is someone who sincerely cares. And so I think that's, given his institutional knowledge, that, that's a no-brainer. And then, of course, you know, since Paul's been with FCDC, we've got to know him. And, and we know that he cares about the community, obviously, given what he's chosen to do. And so, but they're both on and would certainly stand for any questions that you have. Thanks, Cole.
All right. I don't know if we need to ask questions, but if anybody has them, certainly speak up. We've been able to review the applications. Either the applicant, John, or Paul, do you have anything you'd like to say? Maybe Paul?
Yeah, I want to say, Derek, thank you for those kind words.
Yeah, I want to say, Derek, uh, thank you for those, uh, kind words. And I think the hospital is in good shape. I think we're still working, uh, on, uh, making this affiliation, uh, great for our community. And I appreciate the opportunity to continue working in that regard.
I, I would echo. I, I appreciate the opportunity. Um, one of my objectives is to help promote, uh, the hospital throughout the county as I'm, uh, out and about. And, um, uh, make, kind of increase awareness of all the good things that we have available here at the hospital that can serve the, not just the city of Ottawa, but also the entire county.
This is Commissioner Tom Myers.
Colt?
Go ahead, Don. Go ahead, Don.
Hey, uh, the only thing I have, um, a hundred percent for both these people. The only one thing I've asked, and I've asked it before, with you, when you go on there, we have not had a update on what's going on, uh, from the hospital since the changeover, not one. That'd be my only request is that you guys make a point that the county would kind of like to have an update on what's happening.
Yeah. Commissioner, I've, I spoke about that. Uh, you brought that up in an earlier meeting, as, as you know. And I did share that with, uh, Dallas, uh, Perky Pile. And so he has plans of, of, uh, reporting to the commission at least once a year and possibly more. And then in the interim, uh, John and I certainly stand available to bring updates as, as things, uh, occur. So certainly I've heard your concern and, and, uh, and working to address that.
Thank you.
As Commissioner Dunn, I, I have the same, uh, concern that Don had that we haven't heard from, uh, the new administrator out there since he's been on board. And every now and then I get, uh, questions, what's going on at the hospital? So I think, I think, uh, two candidates are excellent choices. And I think they'll keep us up, up to date a little more often than, uh, what's been going on in the past. So. Uh, if nobody else has any, uh, more questions, I'll, I'd recommend both of them for the, uh, uh, hospital trustee board.
All right. Is that a motion to appoint John Cohen and Paul Bean to the R M H Board of Trustees?
Exactly. Yeah.
All right.
Don, I'll second it.
All right. Thanks, Don.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right. Now to staff reports. Derek?
Uh, we continue, um, with our COVID response. Um, you know, I've got Nick on and, and we'll turn it over to him here shortly. Uh, Janet and I continue to work through the SPARC slash CARES Act funding process. As I told you last week, our, our plan has been approved. Um, we are currently working with our consultant. Um, we're still working with them on sub recipient agreements and the procedures associated with, um, our sub recipients using these funds and, and how we're going to reimburse them, how we're going to report that to the state. And I will tell you that, um, Janet and I made the executive decision to basically turn this phase, um, of the process over to the consultant. Um, exclusively, but, but they're really going to quarterback it at this point, just subject our review and approval. And so, um, we've introduced all of our sub recipients to the individuals with, with O'Brien that they're going to be working with. And, and so, uh, with O'Brien will be handling the correspondence for the foreseeable future in that regard. But the ball's rolling. Uh, we still haven't heard, or at least I have not heard more about that December thirty first deadline getting pushed back. But I'm still, um, cautiously optimistic that it's going to happen. It just, it still doesn't make a lot of sense to me to put that kind of deadline on use of these funds when we know the effects of COVID are going to, you know, linger into twenty twenty one. And so we're watching that closely, but for the time being, we're still proceeding with pretty aggressive timelines. But, um, by and large, that, you know, we're, we're working through the, the bureaucracy associated with receiving and utilizing those funds. But it's, it's going as smooth as can be expected. And so, um, you know, I had a conversation with one of my department heads yesterday. Um, and we were talking about the county's COVID response and I appreciate the conversation. Um, and I will say, you know, we, I'm on numerous listservs. I'm on a listserv with other county administrators. I'm on a listserv with other county counselors. I'm on one, the K A C through the League of Municipalities. Um, and we have been fortunate in this community to, there are a lot of counties that have, uh, faced a lot of challenges associated with COVID that we've been able to avoid thus far. And, and I think, uh, there are so many people responsible for that. I think the Board of Commissioners has been very flexible throughout this. You haven't politicized this and I commend you for that. Um, I, I think my staff has done a tremendous job thus far of, you know, keeping their nose to the grindstone and working through this. I think we've had several great community partners throughout this who have been very deferential and have listened to the advice that the health department has tried to give and have, have done what they can to push info out to them. And so thi- this has been an awful pandemic. I mean, twenty twenty as a whole has been a very, very difficult year. But I will tell you, we, we are faring so much better than, than so many of our fellow communities. And so, um, I am pleased with that. And that's really all I have today, Colt. So, uh, happy to turn it over to Nick.
Good morning, Commission.
Well, morning, Nick.
I don't have a lot to report, which can be a good thing. Um, one thing we have noticed is last year to, uh, last month in August, to the fifteenth, we had eighty seven positives. To the fifteenth of September, we've only had twenty four positives. We're still testing and following contacts, doing what we need to do. But I, I had a lot of heartburn about schools starting and just worried that we were going to see a spike. And honestly, we've, we've kept it pretty flat. So I think that's kudos to the community for following orders. I think it's the schools for being good partners with us, good communication. So I, uh, I'm very pleased to report that to you. With that, one of the hot topics, and I, I mentioned it last week, but I want to bring it up again in case any of you get asked questions. Uh, we are working hand in hand with the nursing facilities. And I, I talked about the C M S mandate, that they test their employees. With this, we've received phone calls because people have heard of positive tests in nursing facilities. And to a point, we have had, with the antigen testing, we've had some false positives. They have all been deemed negative by a P C R test through the state. But we still continue to have family members that are concerned. We still have, uh, some members of the public that are concerned. So I wanted to let you know that we are on top of it. We have tested every employee that's tested positive and they have came back negative from those tests. So that, uh, that's good news and, and we're, we're keeping that out. So with that, we're continuing to test contact trace, work hand in hand with the schools. The schools have done a good job on getting contact tracers, which have helped us. And continuing to roll with the punches. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I, I don't have a whole lot to report today.
It doesn't sound like it. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Good morning, Sheriff Richards.
Good morning. Um, as the board will probably remember here, a couple of years ago, the sheriff's office, we developed a comprehensive strategic plan. Um, and part of the goal, uh, some of the things we did in that was, uh, we revamped our hiring process, enhanced our training and kind of did a little bit more targeted effort on some of those things so that every, um, the entire office would kind of be moving in one direction. The goal of that was to help raise the level of professionalism and, uh, and just the efficiency of our, of our office. Um, I don't know that, um, that these next two announcements are a direct result of that, but I think that they help indicate that we're headed in the right direction. And that is that, um, right now we do have three people that are out at K L E T C attending the, uh, Law Enforcement Basic Training Academy. And, um, Deputy Rivers has been, um, elected to be the class president, um, of that academy class. And my understanding is that, uh, that's the first time that the, the sheriff's office has had a, has had a student who was a, who was a class president out there. So we're proud of him for that and those accomplishments. And, um, shows that he, he's displayed the leadership that, uh, that we expected that he would. Um, the other, um, thing is that, um, there's an organization called N I J O. It's a National Institute for Jail Operations. And, um, that's an organization that, that provides training and, uh, and a lot of resources and leadership and for county jails all across the country. And, um, that is the organization also that, um, that we had contracted with, with the, uh, through the Sheriff's Association to host and develop the, uh, Kansas Jail Training Academy that we've been sending people to as well. Um, that organization does a, uh, they off, they give a, have an awards program. And, um, so people can, uh, can submit nominations for, um, awards at various levels. And, um, Corporal Tammy Alexander, um, in our jail, uh, was, uh, submitted. A, uh, someone submitted her for, uh, Corrections Supervisor of the Year. And, uh, and after the board and everybody got done with that process, uh, Tammy was the one that was selected as the National Corrections Supervisor of the Year. And, uh, we're very proud of her for, for all of her accomplishments. And, um, also it was another, uh, corporal in the jail who ended up submitting her for that, uh, for that. They, they kind of beat the, uh, beat admin to the punch on that. So, uh, we're proud of them for what they're doing and how they've stepped up. And, um, just the fact that we have staff being recognized by, by other organizations, I believe speaks volumes about their, about their character and professionalism. And I just wanted to share, uh, with the board this morning. So, um, I will stand for questions if any of you have questions for me.
I don't have a question. This is Commissioner Dickinson. I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I did see a picture of you running out onto the field, uh, uh, the football game on Friday night. I thought that was a very cool gesture that, that, that the, uh, football team did.
Yeah, thank you. That was, uh, Oregon, that was a student organized event. Uh, my son was the primary one that organized it. Um, they, what the pictures don't, uh, don't really show is that that also included people not just from Ottawa, but, uh, Baldwin City as well. And, uh, our sergeant that ran out with us, his daughter's a cheerleader for, for Baldwin. And we had Baldwin Police Department there as well. And so I think it showed the unity that, that they were trying to get across. And, uh, yeah, I think it was well received and we appreciated the, uh, the honor that they had to ask us.
Good. That's nice. Thank you. Uh, David Lee?
Okay, Commissioners, I've got a couple of things to, uh, to visit with you about. Uh, the first being, uh, the traffic study on, on Shawnee, uh, east of K thirty three. Uh, if you recall, I've mentioned this a few times, uh, we had a traffic study completed by C F S engineers. Uh, we did this in response to a, uh, citizen concern in that area. Uh, the citizen, uh, was, is concerned about the speed and the volume of traffic that traveled down that section of road, uh, and it's mostly a residential area. And so we, we initiated the traffic study, had it completed. Uh, the C F S gathered, uh, the data for the traffic study over two four hour periods. Uh, one morning and then the next day in the afternoon, uh, they did this in mid-August, uh, which is, is a typical process. Um, and during that time, they observed a hundred vehicles that passed through that area. And only two of the vehicles were traveling over fifty miles an hour. And that was fifty two miles an hour and fifty three miles an hour. So during the time that they did the study, uh, the speeds were not excessive. Uh, most speed limit reductions are based on the existing eighty fifth percentile speed limit. So, uh, they take all of those cars, uh, and the, the speeds and, and they use the eighty five, uh, percentile to come up with what, um, the typical driver is, is going at. And that, that, um, miles per hour is forty approximately through that area. Uh, the engineers, um, are, are recommending that because there were no, uh, vehicles exceeding the fifty five mile an hour speed limit. And they also reference a study by K State that noted the average speed difference between, uh, recorded driving speeds and the speed limit on gravel roads was not significant between gravel roads with a thirty five mile an hour posted speed limit and gravel roads that have no posted speed limit. Uh, and in the state of Kansas, when there's not a posted speed limit on a road, the, the rule of law is fifty five miles an hour. So the K State study says that there's no difference between, um, uh, the crash data and, and those sorts of things between a thirty five and a fifty five mile an hour speed limit on a gravel road. And so the reg, the engineers are recommending that, uh, we do nothing at this time. Um, um, and, and by doing that, we remain in full compliance with, uh, the M U T C D, which is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is kind of the, uh, the guide, uh, for these sorts of things. My recommendation, recommendation, however, uh, for this particular situation would be to go ahead and reduce the speed limit to forty miles an hour and post the speed limit signs. Um, I base this on the fact that already, uh, at least during the study, cars were traveling at that forty mile an hour speed limit. Uh, but I suspect that during the summer months, um, and I also should say this road leads to Hillsdale Lake about four miles to the east in Miami County. And so I think that during the, uh, summer lo, summer months, when, uh, lake traffic picks up, I do suspect that, uh, folks, at least some of them, are driving at a high rate of speed uh, through what is largely a residential area. And so my recommendation is that we, uh, move forward with the speed reduction, that we prepare the resolution and then we post the signs. Now, I would like your opinion on this because we are deviating from what the traffic study is telling us we should do. Uh, and so I want to get your input to see if you're in favor of, um, of, of, you know, either leaving things as they are, um, or going ahead and posting the, the speed limit sign.
And this is Derek. David and I have discussed this and I recommended that we, we discuss this with you during a staff report. One of the things that, that I am cognizant of is, you know, I've, I've thought about the sheriff's office and any potential added burden that this may impose. I mean, we, we recognize that we have a limited number of deputies and that they can't be everywhere at once. Um, but we also know that speed limit signs do have a deterrent effect. Um, and that even if, you know, we're not going to have a deputy that is consistently patrolling the area and enforcing, because it's literally, it's impossible for us to have people everywhere at once. We do think that, you know, obviously this would ensure that. We do think that, you know, obviously this would ensure that, that speeds are reduced. And so I wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
David, did you say that the Kansas State Study said that a posted thirty-five mile an hour zone versus a fifty-five mile an hour default speed limit? That the posted amount doesn't seem to have a, an effect on speeds traveled?
What it, it, it has no effect on the, um, um, let's see. It, it, it notes that the average speed difference in those areas is, um, not significant. And they also, that the, uh, crash, uh, data, um, related to the speed limit and whatnot in those unposted areas as opposed to the posted areas with a difference in speed limits, that that's not significant either. And, and that, um, so basically whether it's thirty-five or fifty-five, you're gonna get the same results. You know, I, my recommendation and, and Derek's thoughts there too, if a sign would help s, slow down some of the folks, then it would be beneficial. Obviously, we're not gonna be able to, um, make everybody follow the, the rules, but, um, if more people do, it becomes a safer situation. And i, if we, if you would like to, um, uh, talk about this in a, you know, as an official agenda item on a study session, or, uh, if you'd like me to go through with the resolution, I will attach both the traffic study and, uh, I haven't printed out the K-State study, but I will look at that and see if there are parts of that that would be beneficial to have in the packet so that I can provide that information to you. So however you would like to proceed, if you wanna, uh, have another meeting to talk more about it, I will provide that, that detail. Or if you wanna move forward with the resolution, I will still provide that detail and we can talk about it, um, um, once you have it and see the information in your hands.
And to echo that.
I was gonna say, let's see if there's just a consensus today to move forward with putting it on an agenda. It sounds like you have a lot of data that, uh, I think we would be remiss if we didn't consider before making a decision.
Now, this is Commissioner Dunn. Uh, David, have you talked to the Miami County folks about, uh, possibly reducing the speed limit on that road?
I haven't. I wanted to, uh, get through this meeting with you and then I would reach out to, uh, my counterparts in Miami County, uh, to discuss this with them.
Okay.
This is Eric. I think Colt hit the nail on the head. We're, we're not looking for a decision. We, I'm just curious as to whether or not this is a complete non-starter. If you're not interested in it, then, then obviously we, we're not gonna do it, not gonna waste anybody's time. But if there's interest in seeing the data, um, then certainly we can bring that to you.
This is Commissioner Dunn again. The only thing I can see is, uh, is other parts of the county coming up with the same, same request as that request. Probably named several roads just like that that would like to have a reduced, uh, there's speed limit. So that's the only thought I had, but, uh, I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts.
This is Colt. Uh, I would say with our eleven hundred miles of road, I would think we would be setting a precedent here. I would like to look at the information and consider it. I don't know that I'm ready to put it on an agenda, but, uh, I'd like to know more about it, be able to look at it, uh, on my own time. What do you think, Rick?
Yeah, I agree. I, I'm not really for changing the speed limit sign right off the bat. Um, I know Derek made the comment that, you know, we have limited deputies, but I think we have, uh, time to, some deputies could do some more patrol on that area. And I think sometimes that would do as much as a speed limit sign. If, uh, we have a little bit of presence there, I'm not saying twenty-four seven, but a little extra patrol and if there's some tickets written out there, that will seem to change it as much as anything, in my opinion. So I agree to either look at the data or, or whatever, but I'm not really for changing the, the signs right now.
All right. Ian?
I, I think I would agree. Um, considering that we are going against the recommendation, I would like to see more data before we, um, move forward in the other direction.
Looking, looking to approach cautiously, all right. Uh, Dawn, what are your thoughts?
I probably, I feel, even though I, I really probably understand the gentleman, um, you know, and I didn't know until David told us that it was a route that goes to Hillsdale Lake. That kind of changes it a little bit too. That doesn't make it viable or yes or no, but it would throw a little more into the fact. But I would like to see a little more on it before I make a decision.
All right. So we'll be, uh, expecting that information from you, David.
Okay. Would you like to, like me to provide that in a, at the next study session?
Yeah. I think that'd be a good item for a study session.
Okay. Well, I, I will, uh, get it prepared and, and, uh, schedule for the study sessions and get it at an, uh, appropriate, uh, meeting time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to visit with you about, uh, I, I, and I think I've mentioned this before, we have some, some additional bridge decks that we are concerned about. Commissioner Stottermeyer mentioned one on Jackson Road. We've got one on LaBette and we've got one on Idaho that, um, um, my staff has looked at and they are concerned about. So we have set up a meeting on Friday with our bridge engineers. They're gonna come down and, uh, take a look at these bridges with us. Uh, we have been in contact with, um, High Plains, uh, to, to look at them as well. And so, um, quite possibly, we could be bringing, uh, some requests for, uh, bridge repairs, uh, in the coming weeks to you. I wanted to, to make you aware of that. And also the, uh, Field Check visit with KDOT on the Virginia Road Project North of Lane, that is scheduled for October ninth. So there is, uh, lots of movement in that project as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on other things.
Uh, this is Commissioner Dunn. David, uh, the, uh, bridge north of Ottawa goes over the railroad track. For some reason, it, it's getting awful rough and I don't know what's going on with that. I don't know if that's part of your inspection process?
I would have, I'm, I'm not sure if that's our bridge or the city's bridge, but I will certainly look into that.
Yeah, that track is getting awful rough for some reason. I don't know what's going on.
We'll hear back from you on that one as well, it sounds like, so.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, David. Thank you for the update. Janet?
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, just, uh, a few things to throw out to you guys. Um, the census is wrapping up and so we're working, um, to get a few other hard-to-reach areas in the county, um, worked out. And I'm working with our census representative and I'm gonna be reaching out to Chief Wanggartner today to, um, get them in touch so they can talk about some, um, potential areas that we may have some homeless population. I know we've talked about that in the past and, um, so we're going to be working on that. Commissioner Stottermeyer asked me last week about electing delegates, um, for the K-Camp, K-Work and K-C meetings. Uh, I did receive those, uh, early this week from those different organizations and I'll be ha, I'll be putting those on your agenda for next week. Um, I just wanna throw out there to you guys that those three meetings will be held on October fourteenth. They will all three be Zoom meetings. And one will be held at nine-thirty in the morning, um, which could possibly conflict with our, um, Board of Commissioners meeting. So we probably need to talk about that, um, and how that looks for, to get someone to that meeting to vote on our behalf. Um, also, the other two meetings, it appears from everything I've received that they'll be held in conjunction with one another. And they'll both be at three o'clock in the afternoon for K-Camp and K-Work. So we would probably want to appoint the same person to those. Um, but I'll have that in front of you next week. Um, we did have our ballot programmer here this week and we got our ballots program. I'm currently working on the logic and accuracy, uh, testing on those, making sure the ballots run, making sure everything is, um, correct on those before we send tho, send those off to the printer. We will be sending all of our military ballots out for, um, military and overseas citizens out, um, by Saturday. So we've gotta get this wrapped up and then I'll be posting those online so that anyone who would like to see their sample ballot and see who is going to be on their ballot can do so. So we will have that, um, out on social media and we will have that. It's always listed on the county clerk's, um, webpage so you can see how to find your sample ballot. So as always, they are available in my office if anyone wants to stop by and get a copy of their sample ballot. And, um, one last reminder that our ballots will not go out in the mail till October fourteenth. So we still have about a month until those go out. We have a lot of questions nearly every day about why people haven't received their ballots yet. And October fourteenth is the day set, um, in, in law that we can start sending those ballots out. And that will also be the day that we start early voting. So that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Doesn't sound like it. Thank you, Janet. Commissioners' comments, board reports. Dawn?
Yeah, the only one I had, uh, I did, uh, uh, David was on there too. Uh, we was on the solid waste authority meeting last Thursday and we just went over several things, our insurance. And, uh, she has, our new coordinator, Jay, has been going out visiting several of the sites at the different counties. Uh, and she is working with, uh, KDHT, um, some possible grants. And she's been getting some ideas from each one of our sites of, uh, things that, uh, we're needing that are recycling centers. She had been going to some educational classes. She got her IRS report all taken care of. Uh, we talked about a couple of vacant spots on our solid waste board, which Frank County is full. And, uh, we talked about, uh, maybe the solid waste hiring or having a broker for all six counties that would actually go out there and, and look for, uh, better prices and better deals on a six-county-wide deal versus one county having to negotiate. So, uh, that pretty well took care of it. We did, we went over our budget approval for next year and, uh, and everything's moving along. She's putting out a new newsletter and, and, uh, we haven't had to sit down, had a face-to-face meeting with her yet. Everything's been digital, so this is kind of a fly-by-the-seesaw pants right now trying to run an organization, but yet she hasn't officially even had, uh, face-to-face meeting yet, so. But she's doing a good job and, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Dawn. Uh, Commissioner Dickinson?
I have nothing today. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, I had a Zoom meeting with ECAN last night and, uh, a couple of the highlights of the meeting. Uh, they renewed their property and casualty insurance with a new company. But, uh, there's about a twelve percent increase and, uh, ECAN is in nine counties and they have about a one-point-six, uh, incident, uh, an event. And lately it's been a hail event. So, uh, anyway, they're try, trying to improve not having any, you know, claims on their property and casualty, uh, insurance if possible to get a better rate. Uh, they had a clean audit, uh, which is great for anybody. And, uh, being a nonprofit, um, they have a ninety-five percent, um, uh, percent going to the clients, to the organization, and only five percent goes to administrative overheads. So I thought that was a, a great percentage rate for any nonprofit to have mo, that high of a percentage rate going straight to the clients. Also, another thing that came up is, uh, Head Start. A lot of the school districts, the bigger school districts, started their own Head Start programs for four and five years old. And, um, so they're kind of changing their focus to early Head Start, which is from one to three years old. And, and they think that's gonna be a kind of a trend as time goes on that, uh, that it'll be, um, younger-aged, uh, kids that'll be, um, seen by, by this group. So anyway, that's, that's about all I have as far as, um, my ECAN report. So I haven't been anywhere else.
All right. Commissioner Howard?
Um, I haven't been to any meetings. Williamsburg had their city meeting last night. I didn't attend. I talked with the mayor of Williamsburg and Richmond and they're both doing face-to-face meetings and, uh, advising that I wouldn't be coming to those unless, uh, they felt that I needed to be there for a reason. They both had my number and said they'd get ahold of me if there was any thing that they thought I needed to know or any questions they had of me. The main thing that's going on at Williamsburg, they have moved, are moving forward with their, uh, plans to chip and seal all the streets in Williamsburg. They had a special meeting, uh, week ago, uh, approved that. So they're in the process of moving forward with that company to see about getting all their streets chipped and sealed. And that's mainly, the main thing that's going on in Williamsburg. And that's pretty much all I have. Just let you know, Colt, uh, I won't be on for that meeting today with the city and the, the school. I have something else going at that time, so I won't be, uh, joining that meeting, so.
All righty. Good deal. Yeah, so I was gonna mention, uh, we do have a joint lunch meeting today with the city and school district. It'll be held by Zoom. Derek emailed us out the link to join that meeting on September eleventh. So you can reference your email there. And, um, anything you need to add, Derek?
No, sir.
All right. Commissioners, if, uh, I don't hear anything, look for a motion to adjourn.
Dawn, motion?
All right. Is there a second?
I think Rick got it.
All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
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 All right. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.